This time I'd like to call this meeting the Alexander County Board of Commissioners into adjournment, call it into session, excuse me. This is the third day of August of 2020. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here tonight. Of course, this is the first time in several months that we've had the opportunity to meet in person. I appreciate each and every one of you wearing your mask. I appreciate the fact that when you came through the gates, you get in here tonight, I call them gates because before you could come in, they took your temperature. We're also practicing social distance, and we're doing everything that we can do here tonight to make sure that everybody's safe and that they go home, they'll be safe around their families and their loved ones. At this time, I'm Vice Chairman Larry Yoder. Commissioner Mayberry is on vacation. Commissioner Marty Pennell is out tonight also. He's also on vacation, and those two will not be with us tonight. At this time, I will do the invocation, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Commissioner Jeff Peel. If you all would please stand. Let us pray. Our kind and most gracious, we come before you this evening to ask your blessings upon this county, this town, our cities and our states, and our entire country as we go through things that are very, cause problems for each and every one of us and looking out for each and every one of us. These problems, Lord, can be taken care of if people will be kind and respectful of one another, respect the rights of each and every one of us, and treat your neighbor the way you'd want to be treated. Pray for us as we go about our daily lives and trying to do the things that we can do to make our country and our county a better place to live and to raise our children and to make sure that our children become well-educated in this time of the pandemic. Be with those who have been affected by the pandemic, be with those who have lost loved ones. We'd ask you to be with our military, our police officers, our emergency responders. Be with those folks on the coast as they prepare for the midnight coming of the storm. We'd ask your blessings upon them. Keep everyone safe. Look after them. Make sure that they're taken care of and well-protected. We ask all these things in thy name, for it's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. We have with us tonight, we have a special recognition tonight, and this was tremendous honor that I'm able to present this key to the county, to this outstanding citizen. Carl Lentz was first appointed to the Alexander. Carl, if you would, do you mind coming up here and standing as a podium policer? If you'd like to, bring your wife with you. She's the one that stood behind you this whole time? Because most of us men know without a good wife at home and a good woman behind us that we wouldn't make the progress through life that we make. So our wives are those special people that help take care of us, that keep the guiding light on, that lead us in the right direction. And for that, as a man, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
But Carl was first appointed to the Alexander County Board of Elections on July the 20th, 1999, and since that time, he has served through 37 elections. That includes six municipal elections, 11 primaries, six second primaries, 10 general elections, and four special elections. He was involved in acquisition of new voting equipment in 2006 and 2016, as well as the opening of a satellite early voting location in 2014. Today, there are two satellite early voting sites, one in Bethlehem and another in Hidnike. In 2015, Carl was instrumental in the consolidation of our voting precincts, which reduced the total number of precincts from 16 down to 10, and his assistance with the use of electronic poll books at all election day voting sites beginning in 2016 was crucial. Mr. Lentz, knowing you, I've known you a long time, and I know what you've done at the Board of Elections. You've been an outstanding servant to the county, to the state of North Carolina, to the people who come out and vote. You've always served with integrity and with honor, and you've always put your best foot forward to take care of the things at the Board of Elections. And for years, you've served with different folks, and all of you work together real well. And I want to commend you for that and commend you for the service that you've given this county. And I just want to say thank you very much, sir. And at this time, I'm going to present Carl with this plaque. And Carl, it reads here, I'm going to set this right here, okay? It says here, "The Alexander County Board of Commissioners hereby present this key to the county of Carl Lentz in recognition of 21 years of dedicated service to the Alexander County Board of Elections. Presented August 3, 2020." Sir, congratulations. Job well done.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Let's stand in front. Are you having other family members here?
No.
Would you like to have the rest of the board of commissioners stand with you?
Yes, please.
Would you like some of them to stand with you, please? Ah, there's your chair out there. The Board of Elections Director, I didn't recognize him. It's my show. Yeah?
Then you gotta give a speech.
You gotta stand at the top there. You ladies want to get in front of him?
No.
Okay. Not until I can see you.
Did you see everybody? Did you see Martha?
All right. Don't be wise.
There we go. Okay. Martha, if I could have you here. There we go.
Just a couple of steps.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Go.
Thank you.
Go. Oh, yeah. You can do it.
Well, I'd like to thank the people at the Board of Elections. We have an outstanding staff there, and I know we, all our board members come from a political background because we've been recommended for the job by our party chairs. But I'm very proud to say that whenever we had business to attend to, when we get to the Board of Elections, we take our affiliation off the shoulder, put it next to the front door, and then we walk in and do what we have to do. And on the way out, we pick our affiliation up, put it back on the shoulder, and have a good day. We have an excellent amount of people working at the precincts and the early voting, and I say the only thing I'm going to be missing is the people. We had a good time, and we did what we had to do, and I'm very proud of every one of them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
And now, Patrick White, the Board of Elections Director.
I just want to make a few brief remarks. For those of you that don't know, there's 500 Board of Elections members throughout our state. Five serve for each of the 100 counties. Carl ranks third out of those 500 county Board of Elections members throughout our state, and I'm very proud of that accolade, and I can't begin to tell you what kind of asset that has been to our county. That level of experience, that level of wisdom, has really served the voters of this county. And I'd like to just read a letter. This comes from the North Carolina State Board of Elections. It reads, "Dear Chairman Lentz, with sincerest appreciation and on behalf of the State Board of Elections, thank you for your many years of service to the Alexander County Board of Elections. The continued success of open and fair elections in North Carolina is a direct result of your efforts and dedication in making voting accessible to the citizens of Alexander County and all North Carolinians. As you set your sights on future goals, take a moment to reflect upon your past contributions and take pride in knowing that you are an important member of the North Carolina Elections Team. Sincerely, Karen Brinson-Bale, Executive Director of the North Carolina State Board of Elections."
Anybody else would like to say anything? Mr. Lentz, job well done. Thank you, sir. At this time, is there any commissioners that have any reports?
Yes, Vice Chairman Yoder, please. I was fortunate to be at the opening of Knut Kinnels the other day, and as I shared there that day, I'd driven 127 many, many times on my trips back and forth to Gardner Web and trips back and forth to Hickory, and I always thought, wow, that, there really needs to be something in that building. And since I've lived in Alexander County, to best of my knowledge, there has not been anything in that building. Well, there is now, and it is a, quite a haven for dogs. It's a very nice place. They have done an amazing job and are providing a marvelous service to the community. So my hat is tipped to them for the great things that they're doing there and for having entrepreneurial spirit and opening that business there where it's at, and I think that they're going to continue to grow and see great things happen. But very uplifting ribbon-cutting and super-good business, great people, and I wish them all the best.
Mr. Vice Chair, I was able to attend a grand opening at Mimi G's on Friday. It's a ladies' clothing store right on Main Street in front of the antique place. Good people opened it up. I think they'd been working out of their house, selling, then they were in the basement of the old Smithy's building, and they've evolved to be able to move into the store. A lot of nice things there, and I just, as Commissioner Peel said, you know, we've been getting a lot of jobs, and we've been talking about retail in our commissioner meetings, and, you know, we need some retail stores coming, and I think that's coming to play as we see these things happening. And I think they say they were looking for some complementary businesses there that were going to be, probably be opening up and starting a little later, too. So a lot of things happening, and, you know, I just appreciate people, you know, opening business in the county and the town, and it'll help us all. Thanks, sir.
It was a week of openings in Alexander County. I think each one of us attended an opening at some place or another this past week. I had the opportunity to cut the ribbon officially to open the ABC store in Bethlehem, and that was taken on by a group of people, and the only tax dollars that's involved in the ABC store was the money that was spent for the feasibility study. After the feasibility study, there was a group that was together, and the Alexander County ABC Board was appointed, and these folks went to work. They raised the money and did the things they needed to do in order to open that store. It was a grand opening, and a lot of folks were there, and they were pleased to get that going. And like I say, no tax dollars involved, just individuals, group that came together and made that happen. So a lot of good things happening in Alexander County, and things continue to get better, and we get through this pandemic, and maybe more and more of our people will be able to get back to work. And we appreciate those people who have invested in the community in one way or other to bring a business to this county for it to open up. That's good. We like to see that, and thank you for that. Gentlemen, before you, you'll find your agenda. There's one item on there. Budget Amendment Number Eight. We would like to table that until the September meeting. And I would make a motion to approve the budget with the Budget Amendment Number Eight being tabled until our September meeting.
To approve the agenda?
Uh-huh. And the, I forgot about the resolution. Thank you. You're not sitting up here beside me. And to include the resolution, I'm about to miss that one, Jamie. The Resolution by Alexander County Board of Commissioners, refinancing of the 2011 installment loan, installment financing, we'd like to have that also, add that to the agenda, and we'd put that under Item Number Eight-A. Make it Eight-A. Okay? Under Eight, under Other Business. We'll make it Eight-A because it also comes under Other Business for County Manager at that time. So I'd make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Fair being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand. Those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Item Number One is public comment. Madam Clerk, I think we only have one tonight, and I'll let you tell about who that's from and everything.
Okay. These comments are from Dale Clary, and he states, "I am concerned with the lack of an official statement from the Alexander County Board of Commissioners on racial injustice. Changes taking place as the days of systematic racism are no longer acceptable. I encourage you to show leadership by engaging in a public discussion along with the passage of a resolution condemning racial injustice in any form. Please take this opportunity to show that we are a progressive community while also assuring our brothers and sisters of color that our community supports a new era, one without systematic racism."
Thank you, Madam Clerk. As in most instances, public comment, most of the time, the commissioners allow people to speak and say what they wish to say as long as they don't say anything that's detrimental in naming a person or something like that to say anything to them, but we appreciate Mr. Clary's comments at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say, too, I was at a meeting with the clergy alliance, I believe is the official name now, the first meeting they had. Chairman, or County Manager French and I were there. I condemn injustices to people, and I can certainly condemn racism of any kind. You know, I think, you know, young lives matter, lives of the elderly matter, white lives, brown lives, yellow lives, black lives. There's a sanctity for all human lives, and I think that in America, I spoke with Bud Kaywood last week, we talked about people working together. You know, whatever happened to the day when you could sit down and talk to somebody that you had a different viewpoint with, and it could be a civil conversation? Whatever happened to the day where we could listen to others who had different opinions? You know, where people wanted to build our country and our communities and not divide our country and our communities? You know, I'm a firm believer that God made one race. I'm a firm believer that Americans are Americans, and if we all come together, we could truly build a better place for our children and for our grandchildren. This country was built on common sense, civility, and compromise in a lot of ways, where other opinions were listened to and valued. I would say it's time that we all just be civil and hold all people important, make opportunities for all people, but as importantly, to make everyone accountable. I think we've gone through a phase in our country where there's a lot of people who are not very accountable to anything, and that's not good. But I think that if we could restore, you know, no matter how you shape it, decency requires some type of conformity. You know, when we say we want to be nice to people and we want to love our neighbors and we want to do good, there's a piece of conformity that everybody has to do to make that happen, and there's nothing wrong with that because we truly do have the greatest country ever known to man, but if we don't come together, we may not have it much longer. Thank you.
Well, you know, last time I listened to the forum on the, on the, on Facebook, and it was the pastors group that was doing that, and they had several speakers on there talking about everything, and they were talking about black lives matter, and the way it explained, the way they explained it made me understand things just a little better, and I think, you know, black lives do matter. And I think the entire thing is the equality of the way people are treated and the way they're taken care of. For so many years, we've had people that's gone through injustice. You look at the prison system. You look how many people are in our prison system, and then, you know, they're convicted and they're put in there, and some of them come out with worse than they were when they went in. So I think the, one thing that I have stuck through since all this has started, and I'll say it till, till the day I die, we will never get anywhere until we show kindness and respect for our fellow human being, no matter who it is. Kindness and respect go a long way in order to bring stability among people. And like he was talking about, whatever happened to the time we could sit down and hold a discussion without getting mad at one another and shouting and screaming and doing things that we shouldn't be doing? Kindness and respect will do a lot of things to take care of things. And when you look at a lot of these things that's going on, the protest, and if you noticed, there was in Chicago, and the law enforcement was there, and they were trying to do everything, it was a peaceful march, and they had their helicopter, they had their drones up, and they were taking pictures. And the people that were marching peacefully, these people had infiltrated the group, and as they got down to the lower corners close to the Statue of Columbus, these guys slid off to the side, and they started putting on their black outfits, and they were the ones that were causing the problem. It wasn't the people that were marching in decent ways. It was those people that were there for one reason and one reason only, that was to cause problems. And I have to honestly admit that I think Martin Luther King Jr. would be astonished at the way some of those folks were. And it was, it wasn't all just one race. It was different races that were doing this, and I think we've got to learn to disrespect and be kind to one another and to communicate. I think that's one of the most, those are the two most important things that we can do, and that's just my opinion. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, too, kind of piggybacking on what y'all have said, you know, I've said before, I don't condone violence at any level, in any color from, would it be law enforcement or, you know, from our citizens. There is law and order that we need to abide by, but in saying that, I've said it a couple times, and I'll say it again, we've been to DC a couple times. I've been to different places. Where Ben Carson has spoke, and he made a point that really stands out in my mind, and he said, you know, if you're in America, we're all Americans. There's no, you know, Asian-Americans, black Americans, we're all Americans. We need to work together and, you know, solve our problems as a unit, you know, by working and just as said, sat down, you know, talking about things. But, you know, emotions can get involved in anything, and things get carried away, but, you know, we need to make sure that we're treating people like we want to be treated. And I'm thankful for the county we live in here, for our law enforcement, for what they do, and for our citizens that, you know, are taking care, helping each other. And during this time with the COVID-19, you know, it's kind of taken away some of the things we used to be able to do, but people are still coming together and helping each other, and that's what we've got to do. And thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Item Number Two on the agenda tonight is Stotterport Elementary School Wastewater Project Update. Benji Thomas with West Consultants.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. Thanks for allowing me to be here. As you said, I'm Benji Thomas with West Consultants Engineers out of Morganton, and we've been privileged to work with the county on this project to, there's the map, thank you for that. So this, the county got a CBG grant to connect the sewer system from the elementary school to the existing county public system, and this will be allowed to do away with the septic system, which is right there at the playground and the ball field. So obviously a health concern, and I'm glad to be getting rid of that. Just give you a summary of where the project stands to date. The, on May 11th of this year, the notice to proceed was given to the low-bid contractor, Lock Lane Construction out of Stony Point, so they're right there in the same neighborhood, which is very convenient. Their contract amount is $640,000, $569. It was very rainy that first part of May, and they got started a little bit later, but they've really made a lot of progress since then, the last two months. Their deadline is November 7th of this year. We just had a progress meeting last week, and they report that they believe they'll be done by the end of September, at least substantially complete. Probably still be some grassing and so forth to do at that point, but the system should be up and running thereabouts. So progress so far, they've got 1,650 feet of the force main installed, probably more than that by now. This was as of last week. That's about 90%. The pump station is, there we go, it's right there at the picnic shelter across the road from the school. It's actually to be tucked in behind the picnic shelter, somewhat out of the way. It'll be visible, but not, won't interfere with the use of that shelter. So you can see there in the bottom photo, some of the main structures have been put in place. The equipment has been approved and is on order and will hopefully be delivered here soon. There's some pictures of installing the force main along Stony Point School Road. So the sewer will be pumped from the picnic shelter area along Stony Point School Road. From there, it'll convert to a gravity line. It'll go under Stony Point School Road, under the railroad, and under Highway 90, and flow by gravity to the existing Sure-Take sewer pump station. So right now, they're getting pretty close to the railroad, and as you can see, they've done a good job with immediately backfilling, seeding, and restoring the area. That lower photo is a picture of right behind the, or beside the cafeteria. That's where they've just cleared some trees, and they're putting in a grease trap, so that'll pretreat the wastewater from the kitchen so that grease won't interfere with the system or the wastewater plant. So that should be going in soon. They report they hope to get all, everything done on the campus by the time school starts, August 17th. Obviously, they'll have to come back later and do the actual tie-in once all the pumps are tested and running, that sort of thing, but all the major work should be complete before the 17th. And that's about it. It's going well. It's, you know, not a real complicated project, except maybe we got the bore under the railroad coming up. That'll be interesting, and they'll need to be careful, of course. You got a gas line in there and water lines, and everybody's been really good to work with the railroad and Energy United, county staff, and Lock Lane Construction. So I've been pleased with it so far and glad to report that we're ahead of schedule, and hopefully this pandemic's over, the playground will be a safe place to play in more ways than one.
In more ways than one. That's correct. Absolutely.
So we'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
I'm just glad you're ahead of schedule, and I know that they'll be so glad then at Stony Point Elementary School that they can get rid of that backyard sewer system they have there and come back up into the century in which we live.
It's a good project.
It is. Outstanding project.
Well, it's been good work on a good project. Thank you, guys, for getting after it.
You're welcome. Thank you for the work.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Item Number Three on the agenda is the Bethlehem Sewer Project Update. Dan Shapledean with Shapledean Engineering.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members.
Good evening, sir.
It is my pleasure to again return here and to update you on the Bethlehem Sewer Just to let you know that things are going well, considering it is a very difficult project, it's a very challenging project, but we did submit a progress report. We've got two crews working. The crew number one is working down at Whittenburg Access up Wildlife Access Road into Shiloh Church Road. They've laid about 1,900 feet of pipe so far. They are, as of today, they're approaching Steel Loop Bridge Road. And then, excuse me, so then they were, we were going to open cut Shiloh Church Road, they skipped over that. We have a manhole that needs to go there on the, on the Shiloh Church side of Wildlife Access Road and Shiloh Church Road intersection. So they had to order that, they skipped it, and they moved on down the road in order to make sure. maintain progress. They are scheduled to, they're going to open or bore Highway 127. We've got that scheduled for August 10th, which is next week. That'll be a big, I guess, a big milestone. One of the issues there was trying to locate the existing utilities. City of Hickory had a water line shown on the west side of the road, on the Shiloh Church side of the road. They were out for days trying to locate it and then finally deduced that there was not a water line on the west side of the road. It's on the east side of the road, which we already knew that one. The benefit of the county on that one, that is really to our benefit because we had anticipated a water line. They were saying they'd marked it in the field, a water line on the west side of the road, which meant we had to realign the bore, which meant we had to make some changes to our design. As a result, there's, the water line wasn't located, so now we can progress with the way we had it designed at no additional cost to the county. Previously, I'd mentioned that that bore was going to have to be about 160 feet. We've worked with the contractor, we've got it back down to where we had it originally designed, so it'll be about 129 to 130 feet. So there won't be any additional cost for that bore, which I brought to your attention, I think, one of the previous meetings. Crew number two is on Heritage Farm Road, and they're actually getting pretty close to finishing there on the south end of Heritage Farm Road, approaching Pleasant Garden Drive. They've laid about 3,000 feet of pipe. We're going to open cut Pleasant Garden Drive. That was one that we had, originally DOT had us down to bore it, but we've negotiated with DOT to allow us to open cut it. As a result, we're going to be able to make that crossing at cheaper than what we had originally had for the bore. So they should be finished with Heritage Farm Road in the next couple of weeks, and then they're going to move over to Rinke Dam Road and Highway 127. Just to let you know, the most difficult parts of this project are Wildlife Access, Shiloh Church Road, up to Highway 127, and of course, the Rinke Dam and Highway 127 intersection. So, uh, once we get these out of the way, the rest of it is going to be pretty smooth sailing, I anticipate. We've had two pay requests, which we've approved. And there will be at least one change order that we've been negotiating with the contractor on. If you remember, there's, we had to replace manhole number three that was there at Wittenburg Access. Wildlife Access Road open cut was actually going to be a credit back to the county because we've, we had that as a bore, and now we're going to open cut it. So there was going to be a savings there. We had to realign the, the pipe going up the hill behind, what was Evans Drugs? And then we had an open cut Spencer Woods, which actually we, it was a bore, we changed it to an open cut. And we had some service connections there. So, and again, if you recall, manhole number three had deteriorated to the point where we couldn't core it. We submitted some pictures here, and if you see the top picture is the attempt to core that manhole. And you can see the size of that coring machine, that's a 24-inch mandrel that they have on that. Problem was, if you look at the top of the coring machine, it's where they bolt in the bracket to hold it, those bolts would not hold. So that's when they stopped trying to bore it, and then we ended up having to replace that. The old manhole, manhole number three, is the one on the lower left. You can see the, on the right-hand side of the manhole is the force main coming from, coming into the manhole to the pipe, and then the, from Oliver's Landing. And on the left is the gravity line, that's a service line. What was causing, I think, problems with the manhole is that the gravity line that discharges from the top of the manhole creates a lot of gas. The gas creates, leads to bacteria, and the bacteria eat up the concrete. On the right-hand side, we have a five-foot manhole. The other one, the existing one's four-foot. There's a five-foot manhole, we have inside drops, it's lined. You can see the, of course, it is new, but you can see the significant difference between the two. I anticipate that that one on the right will be here probably another 20, 30, 40 years. So we should be, it should be there quite a long time. Everything comes in at the bottom, so you reduce the amount of gas that's generated and the bacteria and the deterioration of the manhole. I think there's some other pictures, just for your information, just to give you an idea of what we're, what the excavation's like. The upper left is the PVC going in at Wittenburg Access, and at that point, we are probably 10, 12 feet deep. Then we've got the manhole two, I just want to give you a picture of what the installation of a manhole, and then the lower left is a 20-inch ducted line pipe along Wildlife Access Road, and to give you an idea of how deep the excavation is there. We're about 15 feet deep. It's hard work, it's slow-going, and, but they're doing a good job. On the right-hand side is where the boring machine, we're boring underneath Heritage Farm Road. And again, you can get an idea of how deep we are. That one is probably about 13 feet deep. And I think that's, that's basically it. They, and upcoming events, again, they're going to be boring Highway 127 and then moving, crew number two moving to Rinke Dam Road and Highway 127 area. So we'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
So, what is your expected completion date now?
I submitted a report, just to let you know, on the construction progress. And what it does, it takes the linear footage of road, of pipe that's been laid, and the time that we've spent on the job. It says contract completed, the schedule is at 30%, but the amount of pipe we put in is 22%. Now, that may imply that we're behind schedule, but as I mentioned, we're in the slowest and hardest part of this project. So, I fully anticipate that we'll be back on schedule and as soon as we get through the Wildlife Access and the Shiloh Church Road, once we get through this, it's going to be force main. Force main's similar to a water line, it's basically three feet deep, and they should be able to lay 300, 400, 500 feet a day. Right now, they're only getting probably, if they get 200 feet a day, they're doing well. So we've got it, the, let me pull out my schedule here. The substantial completion date is still March 11th, final completion April 10th. I think we're still on schedule to meet that.
So things appear to be moving much more smoothly now that you've gotten totally into the project?
Yes, sir, I think so. They seem to, well, as I said, they're in the very, the most difficult part of the Digging 15 feet deep alongside the road is, it's slow-going.
Slow-going. All right.
Appreciate the report and the presentation and all the information. It's very, very good. It allows you to see the magnitude of the project, which is pretty intense. We knew that going in, though. I mean, there's no surprises that it was going to be big holes and lots of concrete and lots of pipe. You know, I was still concerned with, you know, to be 20, 30% in and missing a mark on, you know, a lot of things, $108,000. Yes, we've deducted some, but, you know, we, those could have been outright savings as well. So, you know, I'm, I, I like to keep an eye on the, on the bottom line and the final dollar of it and, you know, missing those things concern me. No change from what I said last time, that those kind of things concern me in a project when they're big-ticket items like that. But I do appreciate the, the update and how things are going and that we're having good progress. I was on Heritage Farm, or no, I was on Shiloh Church the other day, and they was getting after it, and work was going on pretty good. So, thank you, but still very concerned on unforeseen things that I feel like should have been seen.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate the update.
All right. My pleasure. Thank you.
Absolutely, sir. Thank you. Out of number four, Alexander County Preparedness Month 2020 proclamation. Garrett Huffman, Emergency Management Coordinator and Deputy Fire Marshal. Oh, Doug's taking his place, huh? All right. We get the man then, correct?
Good afternoon. Just wanted to take a real quick time. As we all are aware, we've got this little hurricane. I, I don't try, even try to pronounce it, that's coming on the coast, the coast of North Carolina. So this is a pretty good time to talk about the proclamation for Alexander County Preparedness Month for the month of August. And then we also have another thing that we're going on, I think Billy's going to talk to you about it. If you hadn't heard, it's called COVID-19. So we're going to talk a little bit about the proclamation. I'm just going to read it out. "Whereas all North Carolinians should be prepared for natural and man-made disasters as well as disease outbreaks and. Whereas North Carolina is traditionally an active state for tornadoes, severe thunderstorms, with tornadoes touching down and straight-line winds causing severe damage in parts of the state this year. Whereas in 2019, the state experienced 51 tornado touchdowns, 91 flood incidents, and 928 severe thunderstorms, with damaging winds and hail, all of which result in more than $137.5 million in damages statewide. Whereas last year, the National Weather Service in North Carolina issued 158 tornado warnings and 710 severe thunderstorm warnings, with an average warning time of 17 minutes. And whereas last year, the National Weather Service in North Carolina issued 88 flash flood warnings, with an average warning time of 64 minutes. Whereas communities across the state have borne the impact from wildfires, severe weather, damaging hail, high winds, and flooding. Whereas on March 10th, 2020, Governor Cooper declared a state of emergency to coordinate the state's response and protective actions to address the coronavirus disease 2019. Public health emergency provide for the health, safety, and welfare of residents and visitors in North Carolina. Whereas every community, business, family, and individual in Alexander County must ready for natural and man-made disasters, including tornadoes, flooding, hurricanes, and public disturbance, disturbances that might disrupt normal daily activities. Whereas all of Alexander County residents can take a few simple steps, making a family disaster plan, creating an emergency supply kit, and staying informed to keep and make, or, excuse me, to help make preparedness and personal responsibility a priority. Whereas Alexander County residents should know that the risk for their area and plan accordingly. Whereas Alexander County residents should help the elderly and those who cannot help themselves. And whereas Alexander County residents should include the safety of their pets and/or livestock in their emergency plans. Whereas Alexander County, North Carolina Emergency Management, and the state of North Carolina have collaborated to recognize August as North Carolina Preparedness Month to encourage Alexander County residents to be disaster-ready. Now therefore, I, Ryan Mayberry, Chairman, Board of the Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of August 2020 as Alexander County Preparedness Month. And Alexander County encourages all county residents to plan and prepare for weather-related man-made disasters by assembling their emergency supply kits and updating their emergency plans, and adopted the third day of August 2020, signed by Clerk of the Board and the Chairman of the Board, Ryan Mayberry and Ms. Jamie Starks. Also, if the people out listening, if they want to learn to where to get to be or to set up a ready plan, they can go to www.readynorthcarolina.org, and they'll help out with that, or you can contact our office at 828-632-9336.
Very good. I think one of the things, you know, that a lot of people don't understand is what they need to put in the emergency kit. And I know that you'll be in a lot, be doing a lot of public relations things out there here shortly about all this and getting it in the newspaper and everything.
We're going to be working with that, plus what to have in that emergency kit, plus to have contact where you can meet your other families, in case y'all were apart at the time. The www.readync.org has got some good information that can assist with that.
Very good.
Does this replace the March, Preparedness, storm Preparedness that we have always done for years?
It's the possibility it can.
You know, I mean, where, you know, the tornado drills and all that?
We'll, we'll still be doing tornado drills like with the school systems and stuff like that, because that's part of the, the severe weather that we work with.
Will those be in March, or will it be...
Yes, they're usually in March.
So the severe weather and this Preparedness, totally separate? Okay. Thank you.
I entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
I make a motion that we approve the Alexander County Preparedness Month 2020 proclamation.
Second motion.
Motion is made, and second, is there any further discussion? There being none, all those indicate, all those in favor indicate raising your right hand. Please oppose, walk, walk. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening.
Mr. Yoder, I would like to share too, and I'm sure Doug would echo the same thing, that it's not just hurricanes and tornadoes, those flatline winds have caused a lot of damage here.
And I believe it was last year that we had some major flatline winds, or straight-line winds, in the Bethlehem area at Station Number Two's district and in that area right in there. So, and it did do quite a significant amount of damage. I went up there and did some evaluations afterwards. And you couldn't tell me that that wasn't a hurricane, or, excuse me, a tornado, but you, they, they stated it as, as straight-line winds.
I thought it was a tornado from when I looked at it, I'm like, holy cow, you know? And you look back at all those things that we had happen in the last year, and there's still places that still need to be cleaned up that state hadn't got to and hadn't sent the money. Just want to make sure I got Liledown Road out there, okay?
I'm good with that.
I'd like to throw that shot every chance I get, sir.
We worry about that in EMS and emergency management and the fire services and stuff also, because it does take a, a little bit longer to get there in certain areas.
It does, and the thing that they don't understand, and the thing that I have tried to tell them is, that they don't understand that Liledown, Liledown Road is like a bypass for us or an interstate for the people coming from the Bethlehem community. And those people live just across the bridge. And, you know, they still say that they're looking, I, I think it's going to happen soon, from what little bit I've heard. I'm not going to put my name attached to that, though. But, now that you're talking about this Preparedness and everything, I just thought I'd throw in there that there's been some changes in the Department of Transportation, there's been some new people that have been added to the board. Some have decided not to be reappointed, so you're going to see a whole new face of the Department of Transportation Board of Directors. And that should take place, I think they probably will be sworn in this month, if I'm not mistaken. There's two more people that's been added to that board for the accountability, part of it I understand. So I just wanted to throw that out there also, that, so the people on Liledown will know that we've not forgotten them. And this Preparedness thing, you always got to have an escape route. So when things happen like it did down at Liledown, you got to make sure you got, you know the other way out, or you're in trouble.
That is correct.
Thank you, sir.
And just for anybody in DOT that's listening, it's been one-plus years now, one year, three months approximately?
Absolutely. I never miss my shot, I got it any transportation meeting again, okay?
We have told the governor, we have told state representatives, congressmen, senators, DOT, Transportation Board, everyone. And it's not something that we can fix, but we sure can complain and voice an opinion, but the opinion falls on totally deaf ears, seemingly.
This is true. Out of number five, the COVID-19 update, Billy Walker, Assistant Health Director, Doug Gillespie, Director of Public Services, and Mr. Rick French, County Manager. And at this time, Billy Walker will be the first to present.
Good evening. I'm here to give an update as of today for our COVID-19 numbers for Alexander County. We have 272 cases, three hospitalized, we've had two deaths. We have 26 people who are quarantined, and we have 241 that have recovered. I'm going to break them down as far as different statistics with those numbers. 42% are male, 55% female, and there's 3% unknown. For ages 0 to 18, 14.7%. 19 to 25 years of age is 14.3%. 26 to 34 years of age is 15%. 35 to 54 ages is 29.7%. 55 to 65 years of age is 14.3%. And then 65 and older is 10.6%. And then 1.5% is unknown. Symptoms, as far as whether they're having symptoms or not, 58.2% had symptoms, 8.1% did not, and then the 33.7%... We are still currently in the phase 2.5 or 2 and 1/2 with the governor's executive order. I think the next time that he's supposed to update that is August the 7th, unless he does something before then. We, we request that people would do the three Ws, which is wait six feet, wear the mask, and wash, and that, the wash is the hand hygiene, making sure that you, watch what you touch, after touching certain things, you wash your hands. Don't touch your face, don't touch your eyes. The guidance changes a lot, so it was, we were saying, 14 days you would stay at home, and then 72 hours symptom-free. They've backed that down due to some of the science being, well, investigating and doing surveillance on some of the cases in the U.S., and so they've backed that down to 10 days after that first symptom, and being symptom-free, or your symptoms have gotten better without medication for 24 hours. So now, now we'll tell people to stay at home for those 10 days, and then 24 hours once your symptoms have subsided or even gotten better without medication, then, then the quarantine would be off. The 14 days still, if you are exposed, then we would ask that you stay home for 14 days. And that's all I have, do y'all have questions for me?
Is it, how do you think it's spreading now? Do you think it's spreading because of community, or do you think it's spreading because of being at home with your family and you've come in contact and spreading? Which way do you think it's going?
It's definitely community. You know, we saw it most with, when it first started here in, in workplaces, but I think the more you're out, the more you're around other, other people, you're, like I said, when you touch things and then you touch your face, you're not washing your hands. I think we just have to get in a different habit now of, I know there's lots of times you'll get out of your car and start in, see that, wear your mask, and you have to go back to the car to get your mask, because, you know, you're not typically used to having that with you. So I think just getting into a habit of just changing our life, our daily lifestyle, so that we're more careful. I think we've done a wonderful job in our county as far as keeping our nursing homes safe from this.
I think we've done outstanding, I agree with you, 120%.
You know, that, that's the most at-risk population, and there's other counties who are losing lots of their elderly population that are in nursing homes, and, and we have done a great job in those nursing homes in our county.
And knock on wood, you know, it doesn't take but just a little bit to go through a nursing home like wildfire.
It'd take one, I mean, it just takes one. So I think they've, I think the staff at all of our facilities have done a great job.
That's good. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate the report. And now we'll have Doug Gillespie, the Director of Public Services.
Again, just working with Billy and stuff, the big thing that we're seeing here at Alexander County EMS and the Emergency Management is, we're starting to see a lot of the local hospitals going what we call diversion, where they won't accept any patients and stuff like that. The data that I looked at over the last five days, we've seen a significant decrease in hospitalizations of patients in North Carolina, I mean, a little over 100 and some if I can remember right. But we are seeing where some of the local surrounding county hospitals are going on diversion, so we're having to take them to different hospitals. And we look at some of those different hospitals do not provide the same, I'm not saying they don't provide the adequate care, but they don't provide the same care, such as for heart attack patients, Frye and Catawba have cath labs and are able to do the stents and the surgeries there, whereas they go to Caldwell, they have to go somewhere else if they have to have the open-heart surgeries. We have seen a significant increase of about 20% in call volume over the last month or so. So people are starting to go back to the hospital, whereas when it first started out, they were a little scared, they didn't want to go to the hospital, because they were afraid they would, would get hold of this and catch this and stuff like that. So we're seeing a lot of our trucks on the road again, a lot more, increase in mileage and stuff.
You see that in the 911 calls?
Oh, most definitely, and, and I know Greg sent a report, and I know Chairman Peel, that you, you responded to that, and you're seeing it in the 911 calls. And we're seeing a lot of 911 calls and a lot of calls to our office, where people wanting to complain about, well, this restaurant's not wearing this, this restaurant's not doing this, or they're not maintaining the six-foot apart, and we, we communicate that with the Health Department, and also communicate it with the Sheriff's Department and, and similar things.
The bottom line is too, that we all make a choice every day, and if we see something we don't like or bothers us, then we just can avoid that.
We can avoid that area, avoid that, that, that situation. That works in, in life in general, in my opinion.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir. Good job.
The Alexander County Parks and Recreation Department has announced that signups for T-ball, baseball, and softball will begin today, August the 3rd. We're real excited about that, we've been discussing that for some time. Signups for all these sports will run from August 3rd to August 24th. Games should begin on September 14th. If you have questions, if you would call the Alexander County Parks and Recreation Department, 632-1104, and they'll be glad to try to answer your questions. But we were, have been looking at that for some time. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
All right, I think it's great that they're going to get to do something, and that'll be great. I know parents will be glad to get some of them out and do their activities that they normally do in to get a little steam off of them, you know?
Right.
So that'll be very good.
And we keep going?
Keep going.
Okay. Board appointments and reappointments, we'd recommend reappoint Judy Kaywood for three years to the ABC Board, and Larry Yoder to the Future Forward Economic Alliance Board, and that's a recommendation.
Now here's a motion to approve, so that everybody will know about this Future Forward Economic Alliance Board, the Western Piedmont Council Governor intends to dissolve the Future Forward Economics Alliance, and has asked that each county, city appoint their COG Policy Board member to this committee solely to take action to, on the, on dissolving this, this committee. I don't think that it's really been active in, what, the last couple of years, with the rest of my knowledge from when I was told, and I, I've never been to a meeting of it, so I don't think I ever served on that board at that time. So entertain a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the appointments and reappointments as stated by County Manager French.
Second motion.
Motion is made in second, is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Mr. French, item number seven, so that everyone will know where we're at, is Budget Ordinance Amendment Number Three through Number Seven. Number Eight was tabled until the September meeting and the prior voting at the beginning of the meeting.
Budget Amendment Number Three is to budget for estimated 2020 elections, grant funds to the county from the CARES Act grant, and to help America Vote Act, the HAVA grant. Number Four is to increase the Sheriff's Office budget for purchase, to purchase and employ portable metal detectors for use on Alexander County school campuses. The federal grant funds are passed through the North Carolina Public Safety Governor's Crime Commission, no local match is required for this school's safety equipment grant. And Number Five is to increase the Health Department budget for federal grant funds for COVID-19 preparedness and response activities. Number Six is to restore amounts to contingency appropriations due to line item transfers that have moved funds into COVID expense line items. The fiscal year 2021 original budget did not include estimates for COVID expenses. And Number Seven is to adjust grant project budget based on revised guidance regarding eligible expenditures. Several revisions have been issued since the original grant project budget ordinance was prepared in early June. I'll be glad to try to answer any questions, Mr. Chairman, about the budget amendments, but they're all in keeping with what we've been talking about with COVID, mostly.
Very good. Very good. The only question I could ask about any of it is the fact, has, I haven't seen anything come out of the state as to whether or not they're going to appropriate any more funding to the counties, to the CARES Act, because they withheld so many millions of dollars that they withheld, have you seen anything further on that yet?
Yes, sir, we've actually received our other, our second 4%.
Okay.
Payment, actually received it today.
Well, very good, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And entertain a motion to approve item number three through seven on the budget amendments?
Make a motion to approve budget amendments as stated by County Manager.
Motion's been made, is there second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries. Other business, Mr. French, County Manager's report?
Well, the main thing I want to mention tonight is, you have a resolution before you to set up a public hearing for the September 14th meeting, and that's to consider refinancing the 2011 installment financing for the law enforcement and detention center, and when we do that, that would save us $95,000. And so that's a, $95,000 is a lot of money.
That's a lot of money.
All for.
Especially in a small community like ours, that's a lot of money.
But if you'll adopt the resolution, that public hearing will be set up for September 14th, which is our next regular meeting.
I'd entertain a motion to approve the public hearing for September the 14th, correct?
Yes, sir.
Second.
Is there, okay, the motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, very good. Motion carries.
I have a few things for closed session, it'll take a very short period of time, but that's all I have for my report.
Okay, all right. The consent agenda is there before you? Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as stated.
Motion's made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made in second, is there any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries, thank you very much. At this time, we'll go into closed session under North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, Paragraph A, subsection five and six, for contracts on personnel matters only, we will re-adjourn for the primary purpose of adjournment only. I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor indicate by raising your right hand, those opposed likewise, the motion carries, thank you very much.